Gun Sports Radio is sponsored by Love Radio Network. Up or down? Welcome to Gun Sports Radio, all about shooting, hunting, self-defense and more. Now, here are the hosts of Gun Sports Radio, Dave Stahl and Lance Pelkey.
All right, folks, hey, welcome to Gun Sports Radio. Happy Easter to all you folks out there. Everybody in the studio's got a little Easter egg and they're having all kinds of fun.
Easter, Easter, Easter.
We want to thank Gun Range San Diego for all their massive support. 7853 Balboa Avenue in San Diego. Go to gunrangeSanDiego.com, Gun Range San Diego, thegunrangeSanDiego.com, I might add.
Heck, yeah.
10 to 10, seven days a week, 7853 Balboa Avenue. You truly need to go check these people out. Now, they are closed today because one thing Gun Range San Diego is, is family. So hopefully you enjoy your Sunday, but we're rocking. We got Lance Pelkey, Michael Schwartz, and we have a special guest on the line there, Mr. Schwartz.
Yes, we do.
Yep, honored to have from the Encinitas Union School District, Leslie Snyder, who's on the school board. And she just recently, they voted on a Second Amendment related piece of resolution that has to do with gun violence and gun banning and all that good stuff. So I wanted to bring her on the line and talk to her about her vote and exactly what happened there. Leslie, are you there?
I'm here.
Hi, Leslie, happy Easter.
Thank you, same to you, happy Easter.
So you are on the Encinitas Union School District School Board, right?
I am, I am. We're a K through six district. We have about 5,400 kids. And, you know, obviously gun violence and safety in schools is a hot topic. Safety in schools is always important to us.
Sure.
But, and we have a number of, you know, state mandated drills and precautions and planning that, you know, we need to make sure is in place at all of our campuses. But recently, at our last board meeting a couple of weeks ago, there was a resolution that came to the board that was titled Safe Schools. But when you got down into the meat of it and they started calling for action, it was really, all of the action was focused around banning guns or different types of ammunition or different types of guns.
Which is too bad. And it's no surprise either. I'm seeing this all over the county at the city, city council level and at the school board level that they seem to be kind of, you know, masking the real agenda with this idea of public safety. But like you said, it all just boils down to banning guns.
And, you know, truthfully, to me, it's very, very sad, especially at a school level and an elementary level. It's not even an appropriate issue to take up because we really should just be focusing on educating our kids and worrying about math and science and writing and spelling and all of those basic educational components. But instead, there has, you know, an agenda has been introduced and so that showed up as a resolution.
And on the resolution, we say, hey, it just boils down to banning guns. But on the resolution, correct me if I'm wrong, it actually calls for the ban of all semi-automatic firearms. Is that accurate?
Yeah, it does, it does. There were, there were three items that I called into question and, and said that I would be willing to, to, you know, approve or vote in favor of this resolution if three things were taken off. And one of them was I wanted the removal of that, you know, an outright ban of all semi-automatic weapons. They were calling for release of funding for the CDC to study gun violence. I went to the CDC website and I couldn't see anything on there that, you know, indicated that this was an organization that was in, you know, tasked with studying anything other than diseases. There was no mention of guns on there anywhere. So I didn't think that was appropriate. And then the third issue that I had a problem with was they were calling for an age limit increase from 18 to 21 to be able to purchase guns. And I, I don't think that's appropriate either.
So you actually, so you asked them, you said, hey, look, I see your resolution and I will vote for this as long as you take these three things off. And what was their response?
Uh, well, the resolution passed four to one.
Without that, so they were completely unwilling to compromise?
Yes.
So it passed four to one and, and then the way you and I got to talking about this, could you, could you talk a little bit about what happened after the vote?
Sure. So after the vote, the, all five members of the board were asked to sign the resolution. The vote was actually listed on the resolution. So it did say, you know, who, you know, four in favor, one opposed. But then there was a signature space for all five of us to sign. I signed and then realized that, you know, it's not calling out who's, who voted in favor and who voted against. And I just felt like it needed to be clearer that, you know, I had voted against the resolution. And so I asked for the resolution to be redrafted so that I could amend my signature or at least leave off my signature. And I received some pushback on that. Apparently the resolution had been sent up to a, another organization that, you know, I guess is using that our resolution and perhaps many other school districts' resolutions for some sort of activity.
Right, to advance, to try to get, you know, various legislation like gun bans passed, basically saying that you guys are, were, you know, were in favor of this resolution.
Yep. So since I wasn't getting any, any cooperation on that end, I, I did amend my signature so that it simply says may vote next to my signature and then have asked that all documentation be, of the resolution be replaced with this, with this amended signature page.
So correct me if I'm wrong, just to recap, they said, hey, we're worried about public safety and it turned out that the, the real teeth of the resolution had to do with gun bans. And, and then you said, hey, I'm, I'm willing to go along with, with a lot of this as long as you'll compromise on, on just three items on this. And they refused to compromise. And then they portrayed the vote as if it were unanimous and that you voted in favor of it. Is all that pretty much, is that an accurate recap of what happened?
Well, I, I, I don't know that I would go so far as to say they mischaracterized the vote, but they, but there was not a, there was not a call out as to who voted against. So with my signature being on there with, you know, the entire board, it's impossible for anybody to know who voted for and who voted against.
Wow.
And I'm not comfortable with that.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm, I'm very, very comfortable in my position as an elected representative of my community and I, and I feel comfortable speaking on their behalf. And if someone, you know, likes or dislikes the way that I'm speaking, then I want them to be able to come directly to me. So I wanted it to be, to be very clear how I voted on that resolution.
Okay. Now, Leslie, what?
So it remains to be seen if it's replaced or not.
These resolutions have been kind of bouncing around the county. Like I said, the city, some of the city councils, some of the school boards are passing them. Can you talk about what, what exactly, what are the consequences of a resolution?
None.
Yeah, it's just, it's just an opinion.
It's simply a political posturing.
Political posturing, it's just an opinion piece.
Paper tiger.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're an itty bitty school district. How in the world are we going to petition Congress to do anything? It's not really about that. It's about making a statement. It's, it's about, you know, lining up with an agenda. That's really what it is.
What statement do you think that, if you had to sum it up, what, what statement do you feel like they're trying to make with this resolution?
Well, I think that they're trying to, I mean, it's not hidden. I mean, the resolution, the verbiage is very clear that, you know, they, they are trying to push a ban on guns. And they took this resolution to the high school board and they, you know, amped it up a little bit with some, some additional verbiage in there. I don't have the exact in front of me, but it was a little bit meatier. And then they took that resolution to our city, to our city council. And from what I understand, I haven't seen the, the resolution there, but I've spoken to members of, of city council and they've said that there was actually a call to encourage civil disobedience of our, of our students in the schools and that they're encouraging them to walk out of classes in order to protest. So it's clearly not designed as a safety measure because we do earthquake drills and we do lockdown drills and none of that has any sort of public protest or we're not petitioning Congress for any of that. So that's not what this is. This is, this is a political posture that, you know, some people are trying to, you know, to show to, I don't know who, I mean, I, I don't, I don't know, I don't know what purpose this serves frankly. There's no practical purpose, has nothing to do with educating our kids, which is really the job that we're in on the school board is to focus on our kids and their education.
Well, I really appreciate it. I've, I've frequently made the assertion that too often they are using public safety as a way to advance their, their, you know, very blatant anti-gun agenda. And I think this is a really great example. You know, San Diego County Gun Owners, we want to be a part of the conversation. We want to help, we want to solve problems. But this kind of political posturing that you're talking about, it just, it's just not, and misrepresentation, it's just not helping. It's not helping the kids, it's not helping their safety. So are you, you're an elected official? When do you, when are you up for reelection?
I'm up for reelection in 2020, before your term.
Excellent. Do you have a website or anything, Leslie, or if, if people want to learn more about you or?
I don't because I'm not campaigning. So, but, you know, I'm, my, I mean, somebody could email me or they could call me. I guess you could call into the show and get my personal contact information or you could always go leslie.snyder@eusd.net, Encinitas Union School District dot net.
Well, Leslie, thank you so much for coming on and thank you for standing up for what you believe in and we very much appreciate it, Leslie. Thanks for the work you do.
Thanks very much, Michael.
Great job.
Thank you very much.
And Gun Sports Radio is behind you a hundred percent too.
I appreciate that, thank you very much.
All right, all right, folks, we're going to take a small break. When we come back, a whole lot more right here on Gun Sports Radio. All right, folks, hey, welcome back. This is Gun Sports Radio. I'm Dave, he is Lance. And this segment is brought to you by Trident Gunsmithing. Go to tridentgunsmithing.com, tridentgunsmithing.com. Check out, if you're into hunting of any kind, these guys have complete hunting classes. They have special deals on hunting rifles. I mean, it's really an awesome group of guys, retired military, they're here for you. They, and they've got a Dan who's a gunsmither there. Man, I'll tell you what, that guy is magic. He can take your gun, old, new, whatever, and turn it into anything and everything you want, trust me. So go to tridentgunsmithing.com. Also, this is normally John Dillon's call, but he had a, an emergency client, so we gave him the afternoon off. Gasky Dillon in Balance, go to cafirearmslaw.com for all your questions and needs when it comes to gun ownership, that's cafirearmslaw.com. If you get yourself in any kind of hot water or any kind of trouble at all, those are the guys to talk to.
And we, we figured since it was the John Dillon hour, if you will, or minute, that Mike Schwartz here is, I guess, going to go down with Mr. Dillon down to see what Mara Elliott?
We do, we are, we have a Mara Elliott's the, you know what, before we go on, I just wanted to read, what a breath of fresh air that last interview was.
Yeah.
You know, and that's.
That's amazing.
That's an elected official, that's somebody here locally, an elected official that we can rally behind and, and support. I thought she did a great job, but I just wanted to read something really quick. This is right from the resolution that we talked about. Cause we make the assertion, oh, hey, it's all about banning guns. But I just wanted to read really quick before we move on. Right from there, it says, but also, this is right from the resolution, passed four to one by the school board, but also an outright ban on semi-automatic firearms, high-capacity magazines, ammo piercing ammunition, bump stocks and other equipment alteration or modification that would increase the firearms capability, capacity for ammunition, rate of fire, et cetera. Semi-automatic firearms, that's like 80%.
Yeah.
Of the firearms.
That's everything out there outside of BB guns.
Outside of BB guns and, you know, bolt action and pump action. But anyway, I just wanted to read that. And again, I wanted to praise Leslie for, for standing up for what she believes in. But what's happening is in the news nationally and locally, the state passed a, it's called a gun violence restraining order. And the city attorney, not the district attorney, but the city attorney actually has the authority to, to take guns and then put the gun owner through due process. So for example, if a gun owner or somebody is doing something threatening or, or, you know, with a firearm, that sort of thing, then they, your neighbor, your coworker can actually file a complaint, they can immediately take the guns and then, then you go through the due process, then you have to prove.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Okay, is this deja vu? Did not, again, we don't want to make this show political, but did not Trump say for all these people that have mental issues and they've been, we should take their guns away and then do due process?
So here, so it was this, this passed in California not too long ago.
Am I not on the same track?
You did, but, but here's what happened. They passed this in California and then after the Lakeland, Florida, you know, mass murder, horrible.
Horrible.
They, they started, the other side started pushing that, the Brady Organization started pushing that and saying, hey, look, here's what we're, here's what's going on in California. And Mara Elliott, the city attorney, wrote an op-ed, press release op-ed, saying, hey, here are 10 examples of, you know, these gun violent restraining orders that we have executed. And then they, they tried to push that nationally, they're trying to push that nationally. That trickled up to Trump and then he actually talked about putting that as a part of a, a package or a bill.
But then everybody went crazy.
Well, so there's still nothing, there's no bill or anything, nothing's really happened, but there's, they're still hashing out. But here's, so they reached out and they, they think, hey, this is, this is something that everyone should agree on. And, you know, like I said, she gave 10 examples and you read these examples and your first thought is, okay, well, all 10 of these examples are people that, you know, if, if true, if accurate, all these people were using a firearm irresponsibly and in a threatening manner in a lot of situations. So, you know, gee, that, that makes sense. But we're, as we're researching it, we want to know a couple of things. When we go into this meeting, we want to know a couple of things. One is, what's the minimum standard? You know, if someone makes a claim, you know, is that enough to go take your guns? Or is there have to be actual proof?
Right.
Does it have to be actual evidence?
I mean, I can be mad at you, make a phone call and have all your guns taken away.
So what would be like a false report?
Right.
Yeah.
You know, if someone's just.
Like a false police report.
Now I'm mad at, at my neighbor and so I'm going to say, hey.
He's got an arsenal.
He's got an arsenal, he's got guns.
And he's been sitting out front in his underwear yelling and wanting to shoot in the sky.
Right. So if there is no defined floor, you know, if there is no minimum standard.
Yeah, that's crazy.
That's scary.
Yeah, it is scary.
That's scary. So we want to know, hey, what's the minimum standard here? What do people actually have to do to, to get someone else's guns taken away? Cause that's scary. The other part of that is we went through all 10 of the examples that the city attorney gave and found out that, hey, each one of them have at least one and two or three, some of them have two or three laws that were actually broken. Okay, so if somebody's shooting a gun or making threats, that sort of thing.
It's stupid stuff.
They've already broken the law.
Yeah.
And where's the point?
If you've broken the law.
Right.
You know, then you're under arrest, you know, the guns can be taken away, you go through due process. So what's the point of the gun violence restraining order? And really what it boils down to.
And you haven't got these answers yet.
No, well, that's, this is, this is why we're going to the meeting.
When are you going?
Uh, it's a couple of weeks, a couple of weeks Monday.
Oh, good. So I want to, I'm not going to be here next Sunday, but I want to, I want to hear the end of this.
Oh, yeah, we're going to talk all about it. You know, and here's the thing, so, so what it kind of boils down, the gist of what our concerns are, are, you know, you know, if they're breaking the law, you can take their guns away already. That's the way the law is.
So you don't need another law.
If they're not breaking the law, why are we taking their guns away? You know, and I.
Cause you don't like what they did.
Right.
Just because it's not illegal doesn't give you the grounds. That's a stupid thing.
Well, for restraining orders, they, they have a minimum standard. So I had a family member that texted me some violent action stuff and, and I felt that the person meant it. And so I got a temporary restraining order against them and then I went to court and court said that wasn't enough. So supposedly there, I guess there is a minimum for a restraining order. So there should be a minimum for, you know, this kind of thing.
Well, yeah, and you're, exactly. You're, normally with a restraining order, it has to go in front of a judge. And there is a certain amount of.
You get a temporary restraining order first, so you don't have to go in front of the judge is what it ends up happening. But then, then to make it more permanent, then you have to go in front of a judge.
Right, so there's a certain amount of subjectivity, but it's, it's, we, we, you know, entrust that to a judge.
Yes.
So, you know, with these gun violent, by the way, just the fact that they call them gun violence restraining orders, you know, the gun violence thing is a, is a, is a kind of a politically charged term.
It's true, right.
But.
Like Dreamers?
Right, these gun violence restraining orders, what's the minimum standard there? Does it go in front of a judge? Who's making this determination? You know, if a coworker decides that they don't like the weird guy in the, in the, you know, cubicle next to them, are they able to just, you know, make their life miserable by making some false claims? I mean, what, what protection does he have?
Well, there's got to be a recourse. That's just no different than if I said, I called the police and said, hey, Michael Schwartz came over to my house and stole all my money. And then they find out that's not true, I go to jail for making a false report.
Right. And, you know, our, our guest previously, Leslie, she brought up a really good point. They were talking about funding to the CDC, the Center for Disease Control. It's the Center for Disease Control and Prevention. And they didn't want to fund the Center for Disease Control and Prevention to study what they call, you know, gun violence and.
Oh, they didn't want them to study?
They didn't want them to because, and it's a little peek into the mentality of the other side, you know, gun ownership is not a disease, you know, that should be prevented.
There's no pill for it.
So why is the, why does the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, why are they studying that? The FBI keeps crime statistics, you know, there's a ton of studies in academia that talk about, you know, why people, you know, commit crime, that sort of thing. So it just kind of shows that, you know, that's the mentality and we have to, we have to fight that, that change in mentality where it used to be, you know, that, that gun owners were, were the ones that were respected and, and, you know, obviously that guy's law abiding and that sort of thing.
Looked up to.
Looked up to. Now it's turning into a, you know, they're trying to villainize and demonize gun owners simply for, for, for gun ownership.
For some mistakes made by not only the person committing the crime, but for law enforcement not doing their job by following through.
Yeah, good point.
Answering phone, you know, answering leads, going, I mean, if you look at every one of these mass murders, almost every one of them has a trail that people have contacted law enforcement. What's their new slogan? See something, say something?
Right.
Well, what's the point of that? Cause the last.
They're not acting.
Two or three massacres.
They saw something, people said something and nothing happened. But I believe that these resolutions and these gun violence restraining orders and, you know, this, this, all this stuff, this political stuff that's happening is really just a, an attempt to portray gun owners as, as bad, you know, as demonizing.
Well, look what they're doing to California residents. I mean, they're downgrading them to an AB 60 driver's license.
Yeah.
That's, I mean, and taking their rights away.
I seen one the other day too.
Ask your friends, ask everybody and your listeners, ask everybody you know, if, when their birthday's coming up. And they'll say, oh, my birthday's in, you know, three months. And then ask them about their driver's license and it starts that conversation, they have no clue, no clue.
I ran into one, I ran into one.
So they're doing this to the basic citizen in California, taking our rights away. You know, this stuff is, you know, just easy for them.
Extremely important. And so John and I are going to meet with the city attorney. We hope it's going to be a productive and fruitful conversation. We hope that, that her real concern is public safety and, and good, you know, good law basically. But, you know, Mara Elliott, someone that's been very politically charged ever since she's been in office, including giving talks and speeches to the Brady Organization.
You wouldn't want to put money on this, would you? Come on, I haven't made, I haven't won a bet.
And Mike, your website again, if people want to, you know, more information.
SanDiegoCountyGunOwners.com, SanDiegoCountyGunOwners.com.
Yeah.
Absolutely. All right, let's take a quick break. When we come back, a whole lot more right here on Gun Sports Radio, AM 1170, The Answer. All right, folks, hey, welcome back. Gun Sports Radio right here on AM 1170, The Answer. I'm Dave, he is Lance. Hey, welcome to Firearms Legal Protection. This is really good, folks. You need to pay attention to this. Do you or any of your family keep a firearm or other weapons for personal protection? Or maybe do you have or are you going to get a CCW? Do you plan to travel out of state and need to know the local firearm laws? Well, if you're involved in an incident, what is your plan to pay for bail and all the expenses, expensive legal fees? Well, talk to the good folks at Firearms Legal Protection. For less than $10 a month, that's right, $10 a month, you will have peace of mind knowing a 24-hour hotline and legal representation is waiting for your call. And all you have to do is call them. The Firearms Legal Protection at www.firearmylegal.com or you can call them at 469-310-9100. That's 469-310-9100. Michael Schwartz, Lance and I, we all have this program and I'll tell you what, it does give you peace of mind. So remember firearmslegal.com and make sure you mention you heard it right here on KCBQ AM 1170, Gun Sports Radio.
Heck, yeah.
Crucial, those guys are crucial. If you don't have that.
Well, it's worse when you don't.
Yeah.
Cause when you don't, it's ugly.
Yep, have a plan, that's for sure.
Hey, quick shout out to Kelly Wade, one of our listeners just wrote in and said that he's really enjoying the show today.
Excellent, Kelly. We appreciate all the listeners. I try to let everybody I know when I run into people, you know, that this is, you know, this is the place to be, you know, if, if you are a gun owner, thinking about being a gun owner, maybe you're tired of the rhetoric that's out there and you want to get a straight scoop, you'll get it here. You'll never get, we'll never, you know, blow smoke or try to fool you or convince you to anything, we won't do that at all. We, we're really heavy in supporting politicians. I don't care if they're Republican, Democrat, Independent, it doesn't make any difference. If they put our best interests first, we will support them. And Guns Range, San Diego County Gun Owners is really a great organization. We're having a gun prom coming up here, what, just in a couple more weeks?
Yeah, our Second Amendment Celebration Dinner on April 28th. Go to gunprom.com. It's our big annual gala. We're looking to have 600 people there this year. Tatyana Whitlock from the NRA, she's a spokesperson and trainer, she's going to be our keynote speaker. Plus we're going to have prizes and silent auctions and all kinds of fun. Our very own Dave here is going to be our.
MC.
MC.
In my tuxedo. So if you want to see me in a tux, folks, this is, and by the way, I looked, there's only a few tables left. So if you really want to jump on board and have just a ton of fun, where are we holding this thing?
It's at, it's in Del Mar at the, at the, by the racetrack and the fairgrounds there. And it's a big, huge venue. Tickets are $150 per and there are seats available. All you have to do is go to gunprom.com and you can buy tickets and see more details.
So why should I give you any money? What are you going to do with my money?
Well, we, so we do a ton.
What do you do with my money?
We do a ton. First and foremost, what we do is we try to get the right people elected, especially at the local level, the city councils, the county board, you know, school board, like we just heard Leslie earlier on the show today. So we want to make sure that we get the right people vetted and elected and then we hold elected officials locally here, we hold their feet to the fire once they're elected. We're also the voice, the Second Amendment voice and the media, you know, every time there's some kind of story about Second Amendment or guns, they call us. And, you know, before us, they were really just getting the other side of the story. So that's who we are, we're the Second Amendment community and it's, it's been really great, you know, with supporters like the Gun Range San Diego, you know, they're.
They're going to be there.
They're going to be at Gun Prom, they're doing a table and, and they're just absolutely fantastic.
Come down and meet them.
Yep, come down and meet them and they sponsor this show and, and there are so many Yep. Come down and meet them and they sponsor this show and, and there are so many great people in the Second Amendment community, um, that, uh, you know, it's easy to represent us.
Speaking of, um, Gun Range San Diego, so, uh, I got back from the charity shoot that, and by the way, Lance Reader's gonna be on a 445 and do a wrap up from the charity shoot. But I brought my, uh, my pistols back and they were filthy and being that I'm a gold member at the Gun Range San Diego, which is terrific. They clean two guns a month. And as Mike and I were talking before the show, I'm the guy that spills the solvent. So, uh, you know, I need to have someone do it for me and, um, they just do a terrific job. So-
It's a quick turnaround too.
Yeah, they're fast as all get out and they can get that thing, filthy thing cleaned, cause I put about 700 rounds. So we're counting up all the rounds. We're shooting like, my God, I'm gonna run out at this deal. It was, it was quite a bit. So, uh-
What'd you bring? What'd you shoot?
I shot a TRP operator.
Oh.
So this big boy, uh, Springfield. And then, um, you know, for the end, you do that shoot off thing and with the steel targets, it's just great. When you shoot the 45, the nines go ding, 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 and then that 45 doggo bong. So, uh, yeah, don't shoot the hostage. And I didn't.
Didn't shoot the hostage?
Didn't shoot the hostage. So, yeah. So they have the, the big, yeah.
Did you practice at the Gun Range San Diego before you went out to front site?
You know, I did not. In fact, I was kind of flipping out, cause as you all know, I moved finally. And then I was, um-
You were just happy you found your stuff.
Exactly. You know, all my stuff was all over the place and just to kind of repatriate it and to find it. Uh, but truth be told, I, I had some magazines that didn't fit that thing. So when I was doing some of the drills, uh, it wasn't working out for me, uh, because the magazines were getting stuck because they were to fit another, you know, deal. So-
The TRPs, uh, that's a 1911.
1911.
45 caliber.
45 caliber.
You know, Laura just got, she just inherited, uh, the, the granddaddy of, uh, of the TRP. Uh, circa 1920, 1911, that's either nickel plated or chrome. We're not sure which.
So that's a 1920?
It was manufactured in 1920.
And you know what? Uh, oh, and so, wow. I mean, that was, yeah, that was a Colt.
Yep.
Because, um, during World War II, then they had all these different manufacturers, even Singer sewing machine. But to have an original Colt, especially that early, because, you know, 1911.
Yep. That was 20, it was two decades before the, uh, the World War II.
You take it in and have it inspected.
We were gonna have to take a bunch in and have them, so she inherited a Colt 1911 from about 1920. Same circa Winchester Model 12, which is a shotgun. It's got about a 30 inch barrel on it. Beautiful wood stock and-
What gauge is that?
12 gauge.
It is 12 gauge. She has a lot of 16 gauges back then.
Yep. And, uh, beautiful. Um, and then she has a Marlin, she got a Marlin in 30 caliber lever action.
That's beautiful. That's like classic.
All, all circuit. Oh, no, no, no. These are family heirlooms. Um, her dad used to go hunting with this 30 caliber lever action. Um, but they're all beautiful pieces, well maintained. You know, you, you know, you guys, uh, in the, in the car world, you know, the old, the grocery getters? You know, like some nice car and all, they, they just go to the grocery store once a, you know, once a week or whatever. So this, these, these guns are kind of the equivalent of grocery getters. You know, they'd, he'd take them out, they'd go hunting with them once a year. They'd clean them up and put them in.
Yeah.
Put them in the safe and, uh, so they're, they're really well maintained and everything. Still, we gotta, we gotta get them all checked out, make sure they're, you know, they're seaworthy before she starts putting a bunch of rounds downrange with them.
Yeah, that's good. Gotta get her, gotta get her going.
And the Gun Range San Diego is the perfect place to do all that.
I drop all that stuff off and those armors will go right after that stuff. And then we can get her in the range and, and shooting them. When you guys go, let me know. I'd like to, I'd like to shoot that Marlin too.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, God, that's, that's a nice one.
That is a nice one.
We might, it is nice. It's all, like I said, it's all this nice, classic wood, you know?
Beautiful stuff.
What else has she got?
Well, she got a little 22, uh, like a competition, uh, but you know, she went to front site, uh, with us. We were just a couple targets down from you. And this was her first time and she uses a Glock 19.
Yeah.
As her, as her gun of choice. She had a blast. She had a blast. Now, let me tell you, as, as into guns as I am, uh, Laura loves guns, loves the Second Amendment, but-
Not into them as much as you are.
Nowhere near. So this is, and I, we've talked to her for a few years and said, hey, you know, do you wanna come and, and, you know, do this thing? Lance has talked to her, I've talked to her. And it wasn't, so she thought, well, it wasn't something she really wanted to do. And I said, I'll tell you what, let's just go for a couple of days. If you don't like it, and after day one-
We'll pack it.
Yeah, we'll go to Vegas.
Right.
You know, it's 45 minutes away. She loved it. I don't mean she liked it. I don't mean she kind of enjoyed. She loved every minute of it. And she's not exactly an experienced shooter. She knows enough. Um, but this took it to a whole other level. Um, you know, she's, it's not just about, uh, you know, marksmanship, cause she's great at that. But there was now an added comfort level that wasn't there, you know, with her firearm after spending, you know, two days.
Yeah.
You know, loading and unloading and shooting and pulling from concealment.
Again and again and again.
Yeah. And she, she loved it. She absolutely loved it.
Yeah. And especially from a holster too, you know, and being outside and those amazing instructors.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's, it gives you a lot of confidence that people don't realize, you know, that, you know, that you can have.
And now's, I think now is the time in her shooting career to go take like a lesson locally, you know? Because, you know, some of the, some of the stuff that, you know, the, the, the front site stuff is, it's, it's kind of the basics to get you to a certain level. Um, you know, if you go, uh, you know, to a smaller class locally.
Go see Manny.
Go see Manny, for example, one of his classes, you know, now he teaches people that are brand new, green, and it's, it's wonderful. But if you kind of get to a certain level and then go see an instructor.
Yep.
It's that much more valuable, you know, it's that much more useful.
Did she outshoot you?
Probably.
Tell the truth. She outshot you.
She did great. She did really well. She did really well.
Well, that's the beauty of being a rookie.
It is, well, but it, it's just, like I said, the comfort factor. Now she's so much more comfortable, you know, with the firearm.
Yeah.
You know, um, I, I've heard a lot of people, I'm not saying Laura said this, but a number of people have gone there and said, you know, honestly, I was afraid of my gun. I, I really didn't realize it at the time, but I was, I wasn't comfortable enough. I was afraid of it. And after going and getting training, you know, all that-
Cranking through how many rounds?
Yeah, well, in, in two days, uh, I don't know, 300, 400.
At least 300. Yeah, at least 300. That's quite a bit.
Yeah. I was just trying, I was just trying to keep up with Lance here. I don't know. That's all I was.
Oh, yeah?
I was popping a few extra off, getting towards the fourth day, I was kind of losing a little.
A little bad master's in here?
Did you see that video?
No, I haven't seen nothing from you.
Oh, there is no video of me.
I never saw, you know, I didn't see, I didn't even know you went.
Oh, God.
I mean, I seen Lance Reader, he, he knows his social media.
Yeah, he's gonna be on in a couple of minutes.
He knows his social media. He was all over that stuff.
Well, I'm happy to have that. Gun, once again, Gun Range San Diego, you know, so I can take all my stuff down there, just hand it to them and they'll get it all cleaned up and run it again after I, you know, butchered them.
And you'll go do it again.
Yeah.
I gotta do, I gotta get that membership because, you know, you know, who really wants me to get that membership at the Gun Range San Diego? Is the Holiday Inn in Perump, so I don't ruin their towels.
You know what he told me?
What did you do? You use their towels to clean your guns? Well, you're never going back there again. How many hotels are left? You're gonna burn through, you use their towels?
Well, their washcloth, just the wash, and the hand, the hand towel I used.
It's something, isn't it?
All complaints, 1-800-
Yeah, really. Well, I didn't, you know, I didn't, you know, that Hoppies is good stuff. Hoppies 9, the solvent, um, I didn't want to-
He doesn't know anything about solvent.
Yeah.
I knock it over.
Yeah, he knocks it over.
Well, I just didn't want that smell in, in-
I totally get that. Usually all over my carpet.
So what's he doing? Just-
I know, and that's something.
You're never coming to my house.
Technically, I don't think they're ruined technically.
Yep. How, what color are they?
Well, black. They're not the pure white they were.
I don't think they'll ever get pure white again. I can see the rates are up $10. All right, let's take a quick break so we can get Lance Reader on the line. I am dying to hear how successful this event was, cause I already know it was awesome. All right, we're gonna take a small break. You're listening to Guns Sports Radio right here on AM 1170, The Answer. All right, folks. Hey, welcome back. You are listening to Guns Sports Radio. I'm Dave.
Hey, I'm Lance.
And this segment is brought to you by Trident Gunsmithing. Go to tridentgunsmithing.com for all of your gunsmithing needs. These guys are absolutely awesome. Trident Gunsmithing, they'll teach you hunting, teach you how to cook, you can do sausages. You can do it all. So check out tridentgunsmithing.com. Also, hey, Firearms Legal Protection, if you're doing anything with guns, traveling or what have you, and, you know, you wanna be totally, totally safe and for as little as $10 a month, you could have peace of mind 24 hours a day, a hotline, legal representation is waiting for you and your family. So go to firearmslaw.com, firearmslaw.com. We're calling 469-310-9100. That's 469-310-9100. All right, well, we've got Lance Reader on the line, but we've really got a very, very special guest. We've got Laura Schwartz on the line.
I've heard of her.
You heard of her?
Yeah.
So, hey Lance, before we jump to you, let, let's talk to Laura, because this was a girl that went for the first time. Laura, how are you today?
I'm great.
By the way, Happy Easter.
Happy Easter.
I gave you an Easter, little Easter egg. Mikey will bring it home to you.
Yeah. Oh, well, thank you.
Well, somebody had to. So tell us about your, tell us about your experience at Front Site.
You guys, I had such a great time. Uh, for years now, Lance, Lance Reader, my husband, Michael, have been trying to get me to go out there and I've been listening to the show and Michael said, you know, that I've been asked several times. And I thought, yeah, you know, that sounds fun. That sounds good, whatever, you know? And I like to shoot and I don't mind saying so, but I'm, I'm okay. I'm good at it. And I thought, okay, this year I'll go and I will go for two days. And it really was a way better experience than I even anticipated at all. It was, um, I think you guys were talking a little bit about the fact that people were afraid of their guns. And I wouldn't say I was afraid, but I highly respected the gun. And I still respect it, but now I feel like I have a lot more understanding and control. And, um, I, I just was such a great time. I had so much fun. I just feel, I feel like I wanna go back. I even told Michael I'd like to go back already in the fall. And I really did not think that that would even happen to me. I thought, you know, everybody loves shooting, but I'm telling you right now, it really did change me. So if anyone's listening and is on the fence about going to Front Site, I would strongly recommend it, even to the most experienced shooter. It's such a great program and I, I kind of regret not going sooner. So thank you to everyone who pressured me because now I'm, I'm a believer.
And you had a chance to go to Vegas and you threw Vegas out the window.
I went to Vegas too.
Yeah.
And how, how did Lance do organizing it all?
Oh, my gosh. It was such a great event. You know, I know Lance is very passionate about the event, but even just going there, it was so well-run. It was very clear what we needed to do. It was such a great experience to be a part of a fundraising organization, not just going to shoot, but also knowing that our contributions meant something. The raffles were run excellent. And I, I think that Lance and Tatyana did an awesome, awesome job.
Well, we have Lance on the line. Hey Lance, I don't even know why you're bothering to call in.
Hey, Dave, Lance, thanks for having me on the show.
Pleasure. So tell us about it, how'd it go and your perspective?
It, um, it exceeded our expectations on every level. Uh, every year this event gets bigger and bigger, cause everybody that comes to the event goes home and tells 10 friends. And, and, uh, so, you know, we expect bigger and better every year. But, uh, this year it just, uh, it exceeded our expectations. Um, it, uh, it's like the fun factor and, um, and, uh, the excitement level just goes up and up every year. And I'm not sure why, but it just, every year, uh, it just gets more and more exciting.
And you, you had the drone this year?
Yes. And in fact, uh, the, the crowds that are coming out to this charity event have gotten so big that, um, to get everybody into our group photograph, we had to pop up a drone to get everybody in. We had 240 participants, uh, this year, uh, 185 last year. And it was tough getting everybody's faces in, uh, the group photo last year. We had to back up so far, uh, cause we were spread out so wide and we were like three people thick. And this year we were spread out 50 feet wide and we were four people deep. And so the only way to get everybody's faces in was to pop up a drone 20 or 30 feet up in the air and get the group photo.
That's the best excuse I've ever heard for buying a drone. That's great. I'm gonna tell my wife that. That's excellent.
Just in case you ever organized 240 people to go to a four day-
You gotta have a drone.
You better have a drone. That's awesome, Lance. 240 people is the final count? That's awesome.
Yes. Yeah, we had 265 enroll, but we always have attrition and, uh, we, and we make account for that, you know? Cause somebody's child breaks a leg, somebody's car breaks down, somebody loses their job. And, and so we always know that we're gonna get about 10, 10% attrition rate. And, but yeah, 265 enrolled, 240 showed up. And we raised just shy of, we haven't actually finished the tally yet. Um, uh, cause there's, you know, we got scraps of paper here, you know, these are the raffle ticket numbers before the event. This is a raffle ticket at the event. This is a $50 donations. We still have a huge checks coming in, in the mail. But our preliminary number at this point is just shy of $38,000 for leukemia.
Whoa.
In one weekend.
That's awesome. Congratulations.
Thank you. Yeah. If you tell, if you tell people you raised $38,000 this year for leukemia, they're impressed. If you say you did that in one month, they're like, no way. But we did it in one weekend. And it's a testimony to the heart and generosity of the shooting community that come out to the event like this. They dig deep in their wallets and buy raffle tickets, uh, to win wonderful prizes. And, uh, you know, like Laura was saying, you know, they learned some wonderful skills. Um, but they have a wonderful time, meet wonderful friends. Everybody goes home with, you know, a dozen, two dozen new Facebook friends. But at the end of the day, every single penny that goes into this event goes to fight leukemia and lymphoma. It literally goes of, uh, saved lives.
And, um, so we had, you know, folks like Laura who, who's been shooting for a while, but had never really been to a, a two or a four day camp. And you've got, had a lot of experienced people, you had a lot of families and, and so, uh, you know, quite a, quite a range of people.
Yeah. You know, the beautiful thing about the way Front Site runs these courses is that they do. They appeal to the person who has never shot a gun before, never held a gun before. Uh, the, the instruction is so comprehensive. But also we have eight or 10, uh, San Diego police officers that come every year. We have one of them that's a SWAT officer. Two years ago, we had a Navy SEAL come out. And then this year we also had a, a competition shooter, uh, that is highly skilled. But each of these people, whether they're highly skilled or whether they're brand new, is going to learn, uh, they're gonna get some wonderful trigger time. And, uh, they're gonna learn something new and, uh, and meet, you know, some, uh, just amazing people.
The structured practice is, is pretty, you know, before, you know, you know, life happens, job, family, all this stuff. Next thing you know, six, seven, eight months, a year goes by and you haven't gone to the range. Or if you did go to the range, you know, you're just kind of plinking around.
Yep, good point.
This is, you know, two, three, four days of focused, you know, real practice to improve, uh, your comfort level, to improve your proficiency with the firearm. So I, I know, like, you know, we're all super busy, but next thing I know, it's been months before I've shot my gun or really practiced. I know if I go to this every year, um, that I will get at least two, three days out of the year of focused practice. And that's what I really appreciate about it.
That's a good point, Michael, is, um, you know, cause a lot of us go to the range and, you know, we practice our skills and stuff like that. But actually enrolling in a course and having professionals run you through drills and, and increase your skill level, or for, for people that wanna bring their family out that, um, are new to shooting and get comprehensive safety and, and, and training and how to shoot, uh, effectively. And, um, and that's why we have San Diego police officers come out is because they realize that you just can't get enough trigger time. You just can't get enough of having instructors watching you and fine tuning you and bringing your skill levels up. And, uh, the beautiful thing is, this really is training. This isn't just going to the range and, you know, rehashing things that you've done before a thousand times. But this is learning how to draw your weapon from a holster, from concealment, getting a controlled pair off into the thoracic cavity in 1.5 seconds. This is teaching you how to do, um, tactical reloads and emergency reloads, cause guns do run dry. This, this course teaches how to do a type one, type two, type three malfunction clearances, cause guns do malfunction. And you have to get back in the fight. This course also teaches, well, how do you clear a door and, or breach a door and clear a room? Because you may have to crawl and move through your house tactically if three meth heads crawl through your kitchen window at 3:00 in the morning and they mean you harm. So these are all skills that most people, they can't just go to the range and, and practice these kinds of things on their own.
Right.
You need to sign up for a course and get some comprehensive trainings from some of the best instructors in the world.
And, and a lot of people talk the talk about the Second Amendment and how much it means to them and, uh, how we need to do something. Um, but here you are walking the walk, Lance.
Right.
Getting people out there, uh, supporting a good cause, getting training, getting more people to, uh, just, I can't, I can't say enough good. And thank you so much for doing that.
Laura wants to know where the next one is. We don't wanna talk all this other stuff.
You got another date?
When's the next one, Lance?
That, that's a great, that's a great question, Laura. Um, so, uh, the listeners can go to our website, www.charitycourse.gives. It's not dot com, it's dot gives, charitycourse.gives. Go to the website. Um, pretty soon we'll have the date for 2019 up. We don't have it up right away. But you can, once you go to the website, you can sign up for email, um, updates. And as soon as the 2019 date is released, you'll get a, you'll get an email update.